Welcome, everybody, to the May 12, 2020, meeting of the Manchester Town Council, again via Zoom. We'll begin here. I'm gonna put a graphic of flag momentarily. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. I'm messing this all up. Let's lead us to the flag. Dale, we picked this up on scattered brain right now.
It's could be trouble you, please, as DP.
What, Dale?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did that work?
Yes.
Sorry for the delay.
Ryan's muted.
Oh, sorry, I was talking. Thank you, Vince. This is like one of those things where like every once in a while, someone sings the National Anthem and then that everybody doing it in unison. You realize you skipped a line, which is what I did. But I appreciate it. Yeah, last month I said I had it printed out. This month I did not have it printed out. Like, ah, I got it without everybody doing it. But apparently I did not have it. So thank you, Vince, for jumping in. I did not mean to mess that up. So before we move forward with the regular agenda tonight, we need a motion to close the business meeting, open up the public hearing on ordinance 245. We have a motion. A show of hands. Just Jen, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, looks unanimous. We'll close the business meeting, open up a public hearing on ordinance 245, which has to do with maintaining the current tax rate of 216. Steve, I believe we had one email, which is possibly related to this. Do you mind giving a synopsis of that for the record?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. We did receive an email from a Ms. Lorraine Thomas. She voiced her concern in regards to a possible water and sewer increase. Of course, at this present time, the water and sewer rates will stay the same. So I forward that email on to everyone for review. She did mention that she would like for me to share this message with the mayor and the council members. And that is the only comment that we did receive in regards to the budget for the water and sewer rate increases, which we are not, at this time, having a water and sewer rate increase.
Gotcha. Thanks, Steve. So for the record, the email received is really about water and sewer. 245 really has to do with the tax rate anyway, not the water and sewer. Did anybody else receive anything from the public or like to make a mention of ordinance 245 before we close the public hearing? Hearing none will take a motion to close the public hearing, open general business meeting.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing and open the general business meeting.
Second motion.
Second, my Councilman Wilder, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, so we'll move on with the general business meeting. First order of business, approval of March 10, 2020 minutes. So we did not have these last month. You should have those now. We have a motion to approve the minutes from March 10, 2020.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from March of 2020.
Motion.
Motion second. Any additional comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Move on to April 14 minutes. Same thing. Are there any additions or corrections? There are none. Do we have a motion to approve April 14, 2020 minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the April 14, 2020 minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion second, no additions or corrections. Do we have a motion? All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Very good. We'll move on to March 20 treasures report. Should have a treasures report now. Do we have a motion to receive the treasure report from March?
I'll make a motion, we receive the March 2020 treasures report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Unanimous. And then one more. We have the check register from April 2020, a treasure report to follow next month. We have a motion to receive the check register from April.
I make a motion, we receive the April check register.
I'll second it.
Motion second, and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So that's also unanimous. Mayor's report, just a couple of things. I know that everybody that's within the town is aware of this and some of the folks that have been in the community are probably aware of some of these individuals as well, but to be remiss if we let this meeting go by and did not make a mention of the passing of Catherine Riley. She's a long-term employee of the town, retired as clerk treasurer. She was also a member of the town council, also a wife of Mr. Dan Riley, who's on the long-term serving, a council member, volunteer, a community member. And I had the pleasure of sitting next to Mr. Riley for, you know, I don't know, at least a decade on the town council. So I think between the two of them, and Steve Mueller can correct me if I'm wrong, it was 49 or 50 years of continuous service in one aspect or another between the Rileys, which is just amazing. So before we move on, I'd like to just have a moment of silence just for Mrs. Riley and to remember her as a person and her service to the town. Thank you. Moving on, and it seems trivial compared to that, but we do have nuts and bolts. Yard waste pickup is going on on Fridays. It's going to continue through November. We're able to do that even with the rest of the things going on. Please remember, this consists of grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not to, not in excess of three feet or four inches in diameter. Branches must be bundled in harmful loads. Yard waste should not be mixed with mulch, dirt, refuse, pet waste, anything like that, rocks. And put those out on the curb side on Thursday evening if you can, because the guys get started pretty early on Friday, so they're able to get the rest of their duties done. Also, they should be in containers, in harmful loads or big paper crap bags. No plastic bags. We're not going to deal with the plastic bags. Water bills were on a little bit different schedule due to COVID-19. Water and sewer bills were mailed. They are due May 15, as opposed to April 30. Most folks seem to be on with that. We will be adhering to Governor Hogan's orders prohibiting termination of residential services or applying late fees while under the state of emergency. And the, but please pay your bill if you can. It does help us to keep things going and it's going to reduce the amount of folks that we're working with when the state of emergency is lifted, but we will work with you. Since our town office is closed to the public at this point, we're asking people to use Dropbox in front of the town. You can send it in by mail or pay online. For those that are paying online, typically there's a $3.95 convenience fee. I know it's not convenience to pay a $3.95 fee, but that's a fee that we're passing through in order to provide that service to the public. But during the state of emergency, we're going to waive that fee and the town is going to eat that as opposed to passing that through. That is all I have. Any questions on the mayor report items? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council, and everyone present. I will go ahead and start with the April 2020 administrative report. We've had no movement on the following, the opioid litigation, the lippy property annexation, the community solar generating system, and the lease with Freedom Wireless. The Small Cell Tower Ordinance, that's going to be discussion at a planned zoning workshop or meeting over the next several weeks. The Patriots Overlook Annexation Introduction, that will be coming up a little bit later in the agenda. The Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit project, that is approximately 40% complete. You can see the work that's being done out there. And the Athletic Field Lighting Project, the project has started. The materials are being delivered and the poles are to be dismantled over the next several weeks. Under code enforcement, you've been supplied with the monthly code enforcement update. Under miscellaneous items, the Business Expo has been rescheduled to Saturday, September 12. I'll get more information out to you as time goes on. The town was notified that we were awarded another $4,000 grant for the purchase of additional recycling bins through the Maryland Environmental Trust. So that's two years in a row. The Census 2020 is in full swing. Our Sustainable Community Renewal Application, we did supply HCD additional information about a month ago, and we are still waiting renewal approval. Actually, we did receive an email yesterday that it's been submitted and it's still under review. Under COVID-19 updates as of today, as the mayor stated at Town Hall and the Police Department remains closed to the public, all vital town services continue with staff rotation. The partial opening of town park amenities will happen this week. I had to submit a park reopening plan to the Carroll County Health Department today. They did approve that. So over the next week, we are looking at opening up some of our playground equipment. We will be opening up our volleyball court. Our tennis court is actually open right now. That was open last week. So we will slowly start to open things up. Also, we have to take into consideration, do we want to open up the skate park at the end of the week? The Health Department approved our plan, so starting tomorrow, our parks and our maintenance folks will start opening up different amenities throughout our parks. Also, I'm looking at returning all staff back to work on Monday, May 18. We will have to work with some modifications. Our DPW and our maintenance, we're looking at working different crews at alternative work sites. And for our folks here in the office, we have to look into strict social distancing. I'm looking at some guidance from the mayor and the council on that. I believe that our DPW folks will do a fine job. I am a little concerned about our office staff here. I believe if we stick with the strict social distancing, I think we will be, we will be fine. But when you look at it, we are in some closed quarters here. So, but I feel that we can, we can make this work. Any comments that the mayor council may have on that specific item?
Yeah, the only thing I'd probably add, Steve, is that all of these things, including town office staff, it's a fluid situation. So, you know, we will be prepared to pivot if things start looking one way or another. And we'll also keep an eye, just as I think the regular business world is, on improving some technology and looking at, you know, a rotational basis or having folks work at home sometimes, just to space things out and reduce interactions as we continue to move our way through this thing. So it's fluid. We're doing our best to get back to as much as normal as we can as a town, as families, as individuals, as employees. But so, you know, it'd be good to get people back. I know everybody that's been working at home, like all of us on this phone call are, probably itching to get outside a little bit more. So we'll do what we can and keep an eye on things.
We will. We will monitor the situation very closely. We will monitor. We monitor our staff, you know, basically on a daily basis. If they do not feel comfortable in the position that they're in, then we make arrangements for that. So we've been, the staff has been working very well with us and we've been working very well with them. So we're very happy.
Quick question. Not a question that probably anybody wants to hear, but are they required to wear masks or do they not have to wear masks?
I believe when they're in closed quarters like this, I believe when they're in the hallway, I think masks would be a good idea. Most of the time, we're in our offices with the doors closed. So that is something that we should, we should discuss as a staff, as an internal office staff.
Okay.
That's a good, fair discussion. The state standards are if it's six feet apart and not within more than 15 minutes, so pass by in the hallway, but you can discuss that with staff and come up with a plan.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure we're protecting everybody the way we should be.
We are. Yes, we are. We are doing our best, Councilperson Smith. We are doing our best.
I know that for sure. I was there the other day and had to do some things outside, so I know that you are.
I would not allow you in Town Hall.
No, you would not. So I know that you are protecting everybody.
I have made a lot of enemies over the last eight weeks, but if, to keep our people safe, I'll deal with that.
I'm not upset about it. I just, I, you know, you know why my question was. I just had to do that. So, but I understand.
So we can move right ahead along. If nobody has any other questions for me as far as the administrative report, I can do a quick rundown on the Public Works Report.
Okay.
Okay, you have been supplied the monthly water and wastewater data report for April. The town of Manchester field staff, they've maintained a week-on-week-off schedule through April in response to the COVID pandemic. The museum air conditioning HVAC repairs, the outside work is completed. However, the inside work is on hold due to the COVID situation. Underwater, the daily checks and maintenance continue and are work in progress. The April hydrant flushing was postponed. That may happen sometime in June. If not, it will be held off until the fall of the year. The wastewater treatment plant ENR upgrade, we did receive notification that our project was approved by the mayor and board of Public Works and the agreement has, and those proceed, has been issued to CDM Smith. Will be, will be issued to CDM Smith and that. Under Parks Maintenance Roads and Stormwater Management, the parks mowing and wood chip mulching, that's continuing. The storm drain projects, you probably saw the contractor, Stan Ball Incorporated, throughout the town. That is 100% complete. And the storm, stormwater management facility mowing, that began in April and our outside contractor is mowing and more, and they are doing a fine job with that. Any questions in regards to Public Works? Okay, very good.
Okay. There's no questions, then we'll move on to the police report. Chief?
Yes, sir. So our calls for service are still down. They're at an all-time low of 60, 15 of which were out of town. The calls continue to be for noise, animal, juvenile, mini bike, neighbor complaints. We recorded zero Part One crime. The burglary we spoke about last month has been cleared by a person being criminally charged. That was the only arrest for the month. We also had two more additional executive order violation. One complaint was proven to be not a complaint and the second complaint was a skateboard park and that was abated by just a verbal warning and a little bit about the, just educating them about why we have it closed. We had no spikes in any category, nothing serious. You know, again, I got to thank Manchester for their cooperation, looking out for each other. Special thanks to the Emmanuel Lutheran Church and Manchester Elementary for their continued efforts in assisting persons in need for food. And everything's been pretty quiet on this end. We are going to start to increase traffic enforcement again in the upcoming week and continue one from there. The officers know that they have to be safe about it. We're going to be wearing masks and gloves during the stops and just taking precautions there, but we do have to start increasing enforcement. That's about it.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Yeah, so it sounds like things are comparatively going well here, but, you know, keep your eye on the horizon. Kelly, I got a question texted over to me. If somebody in the community has a question, what's the method? Are they able to zoom in? Do we prefer that they call the Town Hall?
Call the Town Hall and I can put them on speaker.
So 410-239-3200? This person might have your cell phone number, so you might get a text first.
I just don't have my phone number because I wanted to, but I will.
Okay, yeah, so if you get one or if I get it, I'll...
It's not my children, right?
No, no, no.
Refresh my memories. Is this being broadcast only on cable or is this also on YouTube? I don't recall.
And I can let Josh from the CMC answer that, but to my knowledge, so it's going with Comcast Channel 23, which they normally see during our normal meetings. And then also, it is being streamed live on the Community Media Center website under Manchester Town Hall Meetings, so that somebody, say with DirecTV in Manchester who doesn't get Comcast, can do it as well. That's my knowledge, so.
Okay, so I know on YouTube, when you broadcast things, I think people can type in questions real time. I guess on the others, they don't have that opportunity.
Okay, well, Kelly, if you get anything, let us know. I mean, we put it out there. We can, anybody can call in. At least, Dale, I don't know the answer to that. I don't have this going through YouTube right now. But, you know, we'll, if we have to continue to do meetings this way through the summer, we'll investigate the best way for folks to get a question in in real time. In the meantime, if anybody has a question, please call Town Hall, 410-239-3200, and then we'll relay that question to the group. Okay, moving on from police. Next item on the agenda, discussion of ordinance 245, maintaining the current tax rate of 216. Again, we did have the public hearing on this. This was introduced during our April meeting. So this is the budget and before, I think, we'll have Kelly give a few...
Highlights.
Highlights. Before you do, the one thing I would say, and I know I've talked to a couple of folks and we haven't had the opportunity to talk as much as we usually would in a current, in a given year, or certainly sit down and hammer out details and talking to, I've been on a number of mayor Zoom meetings, or just talking to some of them and what's going on in their town, how are they doing things. It sounds that, as you can imagine, this is a pretty common issue. No one's had the opportunity to sit down the way that would be in a normal budget season. So I think that what we should go into this year with the expectation of is that budget amendments may be something that become a reality where we really haven't done a lot of those in the past, special appropriations. Because this is really based on our best estimate of what revenues may look like and there's a lot of unknowns of revenues for next year or so. And, you know, what our needs are going to be. So we have to have a budget. It's important that we have it. It has to be balanced. But at the same time, I think, you know, all of us collectively will have to maintain some flexibility to sit down in September or December or March and continue to make this thing work as circumstances change. So I'll leave it at that. I'll let Kelly hit highlights and then we can discuss.
Great. So for people that are listening, as Mayor said, we are keeping the rates the same across the board and we will continue some of the projects that we started, which is, we're going to do some upgrades with some computers, whether it's in the Police Department or the Wastewater Department. We will be purchasing some portable radios, mobile computers. We have, there are going to be some projects that we will encumber from this year because we just frankly can't get to it. And I believe one of them will be Haley's Playground, so we're going to encumber because we want to continue to do work in Christmas Tree Park. We are continuing on the water meter replacement project. We are doing some road rehab, which consists of, we've got Washington Way, Pyramid Circle, Susan Anne, Michelle Road from Bachman to Augusta, Janet Court. So we have 300,000 plus dollars worth of road repairs. We're trying to knock them out as best we can. We're going to continue with storm drain upgrades. And the big project, I would say, is the Park Avenue Water Tank Rehab that we started this year and we are going to continue through because it is a big project and so forth. So that's, those are some of the highlights of what we're looking forward to next year. Again, I'm glad you mentioned, Ryan, there, that we, it is fluid in the sense of we don't know what income tax is going to do. We don't know what some of the other, you know, what the county will give us, but some things are contingent upon how things play out. So appreciate you all keeping, you know, in mind to see what we need to do. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Anybody have, anybody want to make any statements or... I think Kelly, Steve, everybody for their input, certainly the department heads and the town employees for pulling together. And as Kelly said, like the revenue sources is just kind of, who knows? We don't know what income tax is going to look like. We don't know what highway usage is going to look like. So making this one work, we might wind up with more, you know, money in this budget as we get to the fall than we think, based on how the revenue numbers come in. But it's important to be conservative at this point. But this group is going to have some work going into next year because next year we'll probably have a much better look at what revenues look like and they likely won't look great. You know, just depending on how the economy bounces back and how those revenues are projected out. So it is a tough year logistically, but we'll have some tough decisions next year. Is the way I sort of see this. Anybody have any thoughts? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 245, the current tax rate of 216 and the associated budget for fiscal year 2021?
I'll make a motion, we proceed with ordinance 245, maintaining the current tax rate of .216.
And the budget?
I'll second the motion.
The motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. So we have a budget, but let's, let's keep an eye on and let's keep talking. Okay, that moves into introduction of Patriot Overlook Annexation Resolution Number 40-20. So we do have, we have a couple of folks, Mr. Clark Schaefer, Mr. Marty Hackett from Patriots Overlook, Tom McCarron, our town attorney, and Michelle Waller, our zoning administrator. Michelle, would you like to start just from the town's perspective or do you prefer to have them lay something out and then we can bounce questions off you?
I could just start out with Patriots. I think you're all pretty aware where it's located off of Park Avenue. Connects to both Rome Court in Park Avenue Estates and also on Park Avenue. Currently, I just want to give you a little bit. It is about 26 acres, of which Power Homes owns 10 that are in town and the other 16 would be out of town that they're, they are trying. It's all one plat, so they're trying to get it all together for road purposes and water, sewer.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer, from a procedural standpoint, can you... Or I'm sorry, before we go to Patriots Overlook, Mr. McCarron, can, from a procedural standpoint, can you, just for the record, state kind of like how this process goes and... Should we have us all in one nice package? Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So tonight, the resolution detaches, as an exhibit to it, the petition is to be introduced. And at that point, it will be referred to the Planning Committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be to review it, make recommendation. Specifically, their purpose is to review it for the proposed zoning. Sort of at the same time, or just after Planning and Zoning reviews this, the town staff... the town staff will be responsible for putting together what's called an annexation plan under the Maryland Code. Basically, contains the elements of the municipal growth element within our master plan. And the annexation, of course, has to be consistent with our municipal growth element. That would be adopted or approved, if you will, by the town council. And at that point in time, the plan, along with the annexation documents, will be sent to the county and the state for comment. Also, probably at that time, to the county commissioners will be a request for a waiver. Basically, the annexation petition and resolution proposes a more dense or intensive use once annexed than the zoning that is applied to it currently in the county. And there's provision of the Maryland Code that essentially makes, it's easiest if the commissioners essentially allow that to happen through what we call a waiver, basically. Otherwise, for the first five years, after annexation, the town would not have control over the zoning. So that waiver request, which Mr. Schaefer has drafted and I've looked at and is in proper form, would go to the county at the same time. At that time as well, the town council would set a public hearing. Of course, we have to set it out far enough to allow comments to come back, I believe, under the county and town agreement. We have to provide the county sixty days, basically, to make comment, I believe. But in all events, we would set a public hearing and, of course, advertise it the required number of times and at the required intervals set forth in the town code. And then, once we get to the public hearing, essentially, the agencies will have provided, usually in writing. In my experience, they don't typically show up unless there's something major for them to talk about. But if they show up, they have the first right to speak. But typically, as I say, they submit their comments in writing. Applicant, of course, would be given an opportunity, usually to make presentation. The public would have an opportunity to weigh in and make comment. The date for a vote would be set. And then ultimately, a final vote would occur on, at a meeting to be set by the mayor and council. Of course, between the public hearing and the final vote, oftentimes with, in light of whatever public comments may have been made, there may be negotiations on the annexation agreement. But in all events, at the end of the day, once all of that takes place, then the matter would be voted upon for approval. The only issues that I would highlight, the annexation agreement is obviously in draft form, a lot needs to be filled in. But Mr. Schaefer, on behalf of the petitioner, essentially, I make note of three things that they have included in the annexation. Of course, not all that surprising that road improvements would be made in accord with concept plan once proved and ultimately, under, you know, pursuant to the town code, the town standards. The annexation agreement proposes that the town would reserve and dedicate thirty-six single-family residential water and sewer taps. And then beyond that, a change or an amendment to the water and sewer master plan maps would also need to take place, and that's noted as well in the draft annexation agreement. I think those are the three major issues at least. I won't say they're unique, but you know, that are pertinent to this petition and resolution.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Do we have any staff comments before we open the floor up for the Patriots Overlook thing?
I have none, Mayor. I have none.
I just had, I just had a question. Was that the original number, was thirty-six our original number on that layout plan that we tentatively looked at? I'm looking at Clark and Marty.
Like, yes.
Okay, I can remember. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Hackett, floor is yours if you'd like to address the group. I know this is not the usual forum for showing us things and having a great discussion, but it is important to get it on the record and we want to give you the opportunity to talk to the group here.
Thank you. This is Clark Schaefer. I think Tom did a great job of summarizing the process and the situation. As you know, this is just the introduction. And as Tom explained, there'll be a lot of substantive review and discussion, including a public hearing before you're asked to vote on this. This has been in the works for a long time. Marty Hackett knows more about the history than I do, but the Powers Brothers own property in the town and out of the town. We're asking to annex the out-of-town portion. The reason is, we desire water and sewer in order to accomplish a single-family residential development that's been shown on the concept plan for a long time. We realize this is the first step in a long process that includes annexation and then the review of a subdivision plat by your planning commission and approval. As, I think an important factor is that it is shown on your master plan as future growth. It makes, it seems to make a lot of sense in terms of adding this to the town as opposed to a bifurcated type of development. And we intend to, you know, flesh that out as we go forward. Marty, do you have anything you want to add to that? Or we're prepared to answer any questions that we can tonight.
I'm good, Clark.
You're not good, but you're, but you don't have any comments?
Correct.
All right, got you.
So may I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, we have sixteen out-of-town, ten in-town. I suppose, and I hear it's going to be from Park Avenue and some on Broom Court. Will the entire area be accessible by both roads? Or will it be some by Park Avenue and some by Broom? How is that going to be laid out?
A majority of the project will go out to Park Avenue. Where the, at, and how do you pronounce that, Dale, the road?
Broom.
Broom. Right now, there's a using common driveway that serves like four houses that sit back there. There's going to be, there'll be probably five or six more lots in there off of a cul-de-sac is the way it's set up because of the grades. But most of the other property goes right out to, directly to Park Avenue. We did not connect the two roads internally out to Broom, so it's not going to be a through street just because of the way that the grades work out.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. I know some comments came in from people in that area and I haven't read those yet, so I don't know what they said. So in case that question comes up, we'll be prepared.
Yeah, I will add that, and Clark said, we have, part of the project is in the town already. The other part's in the county. And I've mentioned this probably a couple of years ago to Steve. What happens is, is that if you built the road, you'd have to build part of it to town standards, some of it to county standards. And when it comes to maintenance, well, who's plowing the snow and so on? So it's just a lot cleaner the way we have it planned out. Didn't want to put words in your mouth, Steve, but.
Yes, Marty, you're absolutely right about that. We discussed that, you know, a year or so ago. You're absolutely right about that.
I just, I have a question. I had someone ask me Sunday in text, asking, just to make it clear, with the property, if we ended up, if the whole thing ends up with the twenty-six acres, if the sixteen acres get annexed in. Question is, I mean, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I'll let you speak on it. Exactly how many houses are going in and they want to know approximate property size?
The, the lots we have planned out is, I believe it was thirty-six lots on the concept plans that we've done to date. Lots, we were planning on clustering, same as we did like Halley Hill and so on. So they would be clustered down to probably like quarter to third acre lots and create more, some open space.
Okay.
Marty, excuse me, I'm looking at the concept plan now, but it's reduced. But it looks to me like the lots range from point seven acres down to point three, five or so acres. No, here's a point two. So there, and there's, a lot of them seem to be around the point four, point five acres. So that's, that's half acre in size, if I'm reading it right, Marty. Does that make sense?
It does. Some of them are configuration-wise, yes, there. But yeah, but they, some of them dropped down to about a quarter of an acre. Some of them.
Okay.
And they'll be all single-family?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Marty, the thirty-six we're talking about, does that include the current in-town portion? Or is that thirty-six in the proposed annexation area?
That's the entire project. That's the entire acreage of the project.
And how many are currently, so kind of like if we just start talking about like, you know, what's the delta, right? So if we were to break down, how many are currently on that town portion? What would the number be if it was, if you had to keep it at county? And I know that there's a couple of factors in there, but, you know, planning-wise. So now we know it's thirty-six, and then how would the other portion break out?
Marty, I'm, excuse me, but I've got, I'm counting them. And I'm getting, there's a little bit of disparity because the town line runs through a couple of them. Looks to me like sixteen or seventeen are in the town portion now.
That's what I remember.
Yeah. So if we were to not annex it and it stays in the county, so if it's twenty more, let's say if it comes in, right? Like, what's the number if it's out? Or approximate number?
Sixteen?
Yeah, there's ten acres, it'd probably be about sixteen, maybe eighteen lots, that kind of thing.
Delta then that we're talking about is two, four houses total?
Two, what did you mean by that, Ryan?
Well, I guess I mean, if that ten acre stays as county, you think it'll be sixteen, eighteen houses just in the county portion? Or sixteen to eighteen houses total for the whole project?
Mayor, ballpark, I'm counting here, ballpark, we're talking ballpark. We're talking about fourteen more, fourteen more if we get the annexation.
Gotcha.
Fourteen more. But now, of course, keep in mind that if we don't get the annexation, I think the, what we would try to do, I would assume, the developer would, would put, would try to, would still develop that, but it'd just be on water and sewer and the road system would be different, et cetera, et cetera.
I understand. I was just trying to get an idea on rough numbers, not having the benefit of.
That's, that's a pretty good rough number based on this concept.
There was a plan that was done years ago by another firm that I believe had twenty-six or twenty-eight units on it because the part that was in the county was actually shown as a well-inseptic. It still had a cul-de-sac at the end of it. So what happens is, and this is what we spoke to Steve about, was, is when it comes down to plowing snow and all, the cul-de-sac would be in the county and the town would have the main road going in. So the town would actually have to plow the snow and use the county's cul-de-sac to go back out. It was kind of, it just, we'd be dealing with two separate entities or government, you know, municipalities, basically. And this was a lot cleaner that way. And at that point in time, obviously, the town project that would get annexed would then, then, instead of being well-inseptic, it would then be a public water sewer. And so the difference is probably about, a total difference of maybe about eight to ten units on what was actually previously shown.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
Yeah.
From a procedural standpoint, what are the next steps now? So this is the introduction. I know that Mr. McCarron had gone over that. Probably some materials we can get out electronically to members of the council. If they don't have everything already.
Yeah, I think that the materials needed to introduce tonight are with you all. Basically, include the resolution with all the attendant exhibits, which the council should, will presumably introduce them and refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition, there's just a verification form that electronically, some later point here, it's going to get Mayor and the Vice President to sign.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can get that signed. So do we need, Kelly, a motion to refer this to Planning and Zoning Commission? Or is that automatic? I don't remember. Mr. McCarron may be able to answer that.
I think what you can just do is somebody on the council can introduce it and it'll be referred to the planning motion.
Okay. Dale, this is probably in your planning and zoning area, which I can make a motion to introduce the annexation resolution with a referral to planning and zoning?
It's close to where I live, it's probably best that I don't.
Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just knew this was your. It was an area you, so do we have a motion, can we get a motion to introduce the annexation resolution with a referral to planning and zoning for, for comment and work?
I will make a motion to introduce Annex Resolution Number forty dash twenty for referral to planning and zoning.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. McCarron, is this an approval or an acceptance? We're not approving anything other than approving that we are taking a look at it.
Correct. I don't think you need a vote, Mr. Mayor. I think the introduction itself, by virtue of the statute, the Maryland Code, affects a referral at this point in commission.
Got you. Appreciate that. And I know we have other ones out there. I want to be as consistent as we can in the process and the methodology we use to review things that come before the town. All right, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll refer that to planning and zoning. Any other comments on this issue at this point? Okay. Well.
Thanks very much. We'll move on. We'll look forward.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Hackett, for joining us. You're more than welcome to stick around. It's only going to get more interesting, I promise.
Well, with the budget, the budget was all I wanted to hear about.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right.
Good luck working through this stuff.
Ryan, as I let you know, that there is a gentleman on the phone who would like to speak about this and I said it's during the public comment portion.
Okay, so I guess just for the group here, there's, we have something that came in from the public. Is it prudent to either have him speak or to relay his message while we have the two gentlemen here? Or just to enter his comments into the record? Once we get to the public comment section? Anyone have any thoughts? Kelly, you.
Let's get ready for that to Tom.
Sure. I think, while Mr. Hackett and Clark are on, maybe it'd be appropriate to have a comment at this point.
Yeah, so we're not breaking any rules by allowing somebody to comment in this early stage and then. Yeah, we're not, so we're not breaking any rules by allowing somebody to, to comment in this early stage and then.
No, I don't think you're breaking any rules, I, I would say this, you also do not have to take public comment. The Open Meetings Act, i- i- there will be a public hearing, there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to comment, number one. Number two, the Open Meetings Act does not require that you take public comment. Yep, you do in a public hearing, obviously, but not any public meet, uh, meet, you know, regular meetings. So you do not have to take public comment. My suggestion would be, if you were inclined to, to take it. That, you know, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Hackett at least, uh, be present for it, uh, while, while the comment takes place, that would be my suggestion.
Well, well, and thank you, Mr. McCarron, why don't we do this, rather than patching the men kind of like unprepared at this point? Kelly, can you, um, gather essentially the, the comment? Uh, the name, and we'll read into the record, and, and if it makes sense for anybody to, um, to, to respond, or for Mr. Schaefer or Mr. Hackett to. Expand upon, anything will, will allow that to, I, I'm, I'm not, you know, of the mind to censor too much, but. I understand Mr. McCarron saying, we, it, it doesn't make sense to get into, uh, a lot of contingencies probably at this early stage.
Um, well. The gentleman sent Mr. Michael Stensel, he is on Seattle Slough Way, and he sent an email earlier today about three thirty. Um, knowing that this was going to be introduced tonight. And he wanted his, um, opposition, um, to the proposed annexation. Put on record, um, and attached a letter, uh, stating why he felt that way. And, um, there are four houses evidently on Seattle Slough Way, and he was, um, I would say. He wrote the letter on behalf of them, and I, in addition, got another email from another resident there, um, again stating. You know, they wanted their, their voice heard, I did explain to them that this is a kind of long process, and right now it was just the introduction. Um, but. Uh, I, I said, we have an area on the agenda where there's comments and concerns from the public, if that's what we want to do, so.
Alright, well, this is, this is an email and a general, and a general objection. Um, to the idea, and maybe at this point we send that out to, um, to the group, I don't know if there's really anything for. Uh, the Patriot Overlook folks to respond to on that, but they certainly are.
If you don't, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I don't know where, where this person lives specifically, but I'd like to point this out. And, and we're happy to, you know, obviously receive any public comments and participate in the process as it goes through. But we, we've talked about this annexation with the town for many, many years now. Uh, Marty's concept plan that we're working with goes back to two thousand and fifteen. In the course of those conversations in the last year or so, the town, um, staff. Noticed that there were other lots, I think it was four or five property owners. That were located adjacent, uh, and were very near to this piece of ground we're asking to get annexed. And, uh, they, I think correctly, frankly, pointed out that. It made some sense to consider whether or not it made sense for the town to bring them in at the same time. Um, I don't have that in front of me now, but I, they asked, so I sent, at their, at the town's request, we. I sent letters to those, uh, those adjoining property owners, four or five of them, saying, hey. We're getting ready, we're considering asking Manchester to annex our, this piece of property that's next to you. Uh, if you want, you know, we will include you in that petition. We'll, we'll have our surveyors draw the map, maps out and push you in, and you could come in at the same time. I got one response to that and had a, a back and forth, sent, sent, I forget the gentleman's name, I've got him in my file. Sent the gentleman our plans, et cetera. And as I recall, that gentleman was living in a house that, uh, the powers built. Uh, because they had done another development up there, and he was, as I recall, pretty happy with the powers at that time, but anyway. Uh, I just wanted you to know that that could, that, that, uh, did occur, and we never got any. Interest in other people annexing in, so that, that, that's out there, and we'll, we'll, we'll see.
And I'd like to make a comment, um, we did, right after we did that, and you sent the letters out, I did hear from some people on Seattle Slough. And unfortunately, Seattle Slough comes off of Broom, which is in town. And the four houses are directly behind houses that are in town, so we have. Not only you have in and out of town with this development, but you've got different pools, like they're open burning in their yard, which is right. Next to an in-town person, where they're four-wheeling up and down the road because they can use them in their yard, but the town can't, so. These were some of the things that, when Steve and I met with them, we thought maybe if they would all come in together, it'd be a lot easier to. Kind of rule on them.
So it's thirty one fifteen, Seattle Slough Way, Mr. Michael Stensel. And another neighbor, I don't know if I'm saying the name right, Peden, P E D E N, um, both sent in emails. Um, and I just wanted to have that part of the record, it was thirty one fifteen, Seattle Slough Way.
Thank you, I'll, I'll, Michelle, I'll hook up with you to get a copy of that, so I just have it for my file. The, 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 the comment letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else with respect to Patriots Overlook for tonight? So, uh, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Hackett, thank you, uh, obviously, um, you know, we'll do our best to move these things through. The, the, the process, our, our process, just like this meeting, isn't really built for the current situation we're in. So we'll, um, you know, the planning is going to have some challenges in terms of the way that we usually do business, but. Uh, we'll be responsive, as responsive as we can be to, uh, to questions and to moving things along and giving you some sort of answer as soon as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you now, have a good evening.
Thanks. Alright, uh, moving on, next item on the agenda, discussion of Resolution Number One dash twenty twenty relating to the accumulation. Of emergency time and expiration of regular leave. Um, Stephen Kelly and I have had a couple of conversations, so please jump in if I mess something up, as I did. Uh, just yesterday, and sort of, uh, pulling this all together, uh, to get everybody up, up, up to speed, and I have talked to some of you, I'm sure you guys have talked to other people. We have three kind of, three issues going on. One is folks in town that, that are employees, they have comp time, comp time based on the. Um, personnel policy was set to expire June thirtieth, well, based on the way things are going right now. It makes sense to not hold their feet to the fire on that, to extend out that comp time, so we'll call that regular comp time. Uh, and I believe, we'll, we'll read through this resolution here in a minute and then discuss, that is September thirtieth, so that's something that you'd earned in the past. It was supposed to expire next month, well, this is not the right time, and we can't have everybody not showing up for work, you know, when things are needed right now, so it's taking that bucket of time. And giving those folks until September to use. We then have what we're calling COVID time. Our personnel policy really wasn't well-built, or something like a COVID-type emergency, it's really more for. Water main break, or snow emergency, or some sort of short-term thing where we need certain folks, or we need everybody. To come in and to handle an emergency situation. The way that COVID has worked, because we're piggybacking onto the state, and we also have a, a, uh, emergency declaration here in Manchester. Is that we've been accumulating comp time at one for one. Um, which hasn't been all that uncommon in the area. Um, other municipalities and governments are, are now addressing this, I believe the county and the sheriff's department had a one point five to one for some reason. Um, so they were just accumulating just a ridiculous amount of, of comp time, which is going to become a liability at some point, uh, that they'll have to address. So it makes sense for us to address it to, the, the proposal here is while we have this state of emergency in effect, to reduce that rate starting May fifteenth, which is this week. To a credit ratio of point five hours for one hour, um, of time worked. And then I think it makes sense to, to readdress that in, in June, right, are we going to be looking at this the rest of the year, is, is this something the town can afford, is this equitable, are folks doing? Really emergency-type work under extraordinary circumstances, or are they just doing their jobs and the front door is locked? So it's something that we can, we can continue to discuss and, uh, and, and address, and, and we should continue to discuss it. And the third piece of this is for the COVID comp time, earned under any of the formulas, the COVID comp time. That comp time would extend out to, I believe it is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So therefore, we're not pushing folks into a situation where we're going to have everybody off at the same time. It'll extend out that liability and, and the ability for those town employees to take that time, um, for, I guess, eighteen months or so. So that's, that's a summary, um, did I get any of the details wrong? Steve or Kelly, missing your understanding?
Uh, no, Mayor, uh, one of the things, when we talk about the, uh. Uh, the time to be used before September thirtieth of twenty twenty, not only comp time that has been accrued, but also vacation and personal time. So that, that's included in that also.
Okay, and then, this is a resolution, so procedurally, do we vote on this tonight? Uh, and does that, because it's a resolution and not an ordinance, is it qualify as an emergency? Or is this a personnel policy change, therefore we vote on the resolution, becomes effective, and we give it the effective as of the of May fifteen?
I, I believe it's a per, personnel policy change, uh, which you can effect immediately through passage of this resolution coming in.
Good, that's my understanding as well. Uh, so I'm going to read through the, the changes, I'm not going to read through all of the whereas's, uh, the whereas's you, you have in front of you. Um, we certainly can post those and make those, uh, public, uh, but they really have to do with, whereas, you know, COVID nineteen is a state of emergency. Uh, we're dealing with the personnel policy, um, and we're making a move in the best interest of the town. To at least temporarily, pending further review, modify the town's leave policies contained in Chapter fourteen, the town's personnel manual. Related to the accumulation of leave, uh, as a result of working during the COVID nineteen state of emergency, so. I'll read through the, uh, the, the changes here, and then we can discuss. It is resolved that pending further review, beginning on the first day after the pay period ending May fifteenth, twenty twenty. Employees who work for COVID nineteen state of emergency shall accrue emergency leave credit. At the ratio of point five hours of leave to one hour work time during the emergency. And as further resolved pending further review, the any and all leave accumulated from working during the COVID nineteen state of emergency. Must be used on or before January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, or shall be lost. And be it further, be, uh, it is further resolved pending further review that. The date by which regular leave for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, beyond what may be carried forward into the next fiscal year, must be taken or lost. Shall be extended from June thirtieth, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty. So that is the, the resolution, so that, I'll open it up and see if anybody has comments, questions. Thoughts?
I mean, I think it's only fair that we extend the timeout, I don't think we can expect anybody to have to take the time the next month, which. Probably isn't even feasible anyway, or even by the end of the year, I mean, I don't, I don't know how we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I, I think that's true, one, one thing I, I implore this group to keep an eye on, and. Is. And I think we can change this at any time, is over the next month. Um, you know, what, we, we have a couple of things in my mind, does it make sense to continue doing point five? Comp hour for every hour that's worked, so if you come in and work eight hours, you get four hours comp time, because we have an emergency situation. Um, as this develops into some sort of normal situation. Um, it, you know, right now, I think that's what we're moving forward with, given the fact that anyone that's working that. During a stay-at-home order-type situation, they're taking additional risk, getting out, uh, and, and about, you know, working close to each other. Um, working in the parks, working on the water and sewer system. Um, but if we start, if we get information of the next month that says, hey, this is a situation that we're all going to be in for the next six months, and I'm just throwing that number out there. Does it make sense to continue under this, or to take a second look at, at what we're doing? Um, I think that's something that we could discuss again, you know, next month, but the, the, the one for one, you know, I think everybody felt like. Um, this wasn't the kind of situation it was meant for, and we were going to accumulate and put the town in, in a bad spot down the road by accumulating that much leave. Just my thoughts. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I would agree with the reevaluation, just to, just to keep an eye on it, you know, not to make it this indefinite, that we're saying a hundred percent, we're going to do it for a year, or a year and a half, or however, but. Just revisit it, you know, maybe in a couple of months, if things haven't changed.
I, I think for now, I mean, like everything else, this is just my thought, um, I, I think we've got to talk about it every month, and. Uh, in, in a long-term sense, we need to. Okay, what, what's going to make sense for ten years down the road, something like this happens again? Do, do we have sort of this short-term emergency versus long-term strategy? Um, because it's, it's, it's not in the best interest of the town to be in a situation where. We increase over a long-term basis by fifty percent or a hundred percent, the, the labor cost, right, we just, how do you budget for that? Long-term, it's, so that's, you know, to, to me, that's something we have to keep an eye on. Um, but, you know, for right now, I think this kind of like addresses some of the emergency nature of it. Uh, you know, we're able to, to get some relief on, on the time deadlines, and, um, and then revisit. Sorry about the visitor behind me. Anybody else have any thoughts before we, um. Move for a motion? Hearing none, do we have a, a motion to approve Resolution Number One dash twenty twenty related to accumulation of emergency time and expiration of regular leave? Is Melinda still with us?
Sorry, I was talking and it was on mute, I apologize. I said I'll make a motion on Resolution One dash two zero two zero relating to the accumulation of emergency time expiration of regular leave.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion second, a- any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favors say aye, raise your hand. Two, three. Melinda, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, sorry, my picture's gone for some reason, I apologize.
That's okay, I assumed you did since you made the motion, but.
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously, um, but please, like, uh, think about that, um, and, and. You know, like, talk to each other, talk to, to, to folks that are counterparts in, in other places, um, even business, so we can. Come up with a, a best practice and, and what's in the best interest and of the town and the town employees and, and fixing this problem, so we. We're best suited for the next situation like this. Alright, next thing, uh, questions and comments from the community, um. Do we have any others, Kelly, that, that came in, or does anybody have any that? No, okay, uh, committee reports, Councilwoman Smith.
Uh, so we haven't had a meeting, obviously, because they're, they're not having any meetings, but, um, the only thing I can tell you is they did send something out. The Comcast is getting ready to start reopening some of their stores, not the one in Westminster, because they're not going to reopen that one, but. The ones that they have closed down, so, to try to accommodate some of the customers, so that's the latest I've heard.
Okay. Councilwoman Miller?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Councilwoman Vachelli?
Nothing to report at this time, I think Steve mentioned the Business Expo scheduled for September.
Very good, and hopefully we get it off in September. Councilwoman Howe? You're on mute, Deb.
Me. Has been canceled, but.
Being closed. That's all. That's all.
Okay. Um, Deb, for, for the record, a lot of that was muted out. Uh, la- last month it kept unmuting. This time it's muting. Um, is there, is there anything, like, in, in brief, you, you want to, how, if you're able to unmute quickly?
Okay. I unmute her right now. Debbie, you're muted right now. Do you, can you unmute yourself? Because when I do it, it goes right back to mute. Hit your spacebar, maybe?
Yeah, sometimes when you hold the spacebar down, it works.
Do you want to try that, Debbie? Hold the spacebar down and you'll unmute yourself? All right, I'm going to unmute you. How's that? I just unmuted you. So if you, can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you, Deb's muted.
Debbie, okay, I just unmuted you. Don't touch anything.
Back to mute. Yeah, why, why don't we do this? I, I know that you typically have some notes. Can you email in your notes to Kelly? Kelly will, um, put them, send them out to everybody, and then we can drop a copy of them in a minute. Will that work? Okay. All right. Uh, moving on. Uh, Councilwoman Wilder.
Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not meet last month. However, we do have a virtual meeting scheduled for next Tuesday as usual. And we'll probably have a number of work sessions after that to talk about a number of things coming up. And that's it.
Yeah. And you guys have a busy sleep. Um, is, is that, uh, for next week, is the, uh, the solar project on, on your list?
Uh, be, be honest with you, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
Though I thought on our list, this coming up, we have the, um, the Lippi, the recommendations that you sent back to us, and now we're going to send back to you.
Okay.
But we have not really talked much about that, uh, cell tower again. We're on small cell towers, but not the solar.
On, on the solar piece, I, I thought the last meeting we were able to have in person, there were some things that maybe weren't known, and a gentleman came in, asked some questions. And I think rather than voting on that at that point, we said, hey, why don't we send him back with his list of questions on planning and zoning and kind of have them work through that? I know it's been a couple of months.
Yes. And he sent me an email, and we have not met since. So you just reminded me. I will get ahold of him for this next one.
And, and if it doesn't fit into this one, it's, I think it is what it is, but I just didn't want to completely drop it if we told them we were going to do something. Okay. Um, obviously, we don't have Trent with us tonight. I don't think Trent's been in school. So turns out he was wrong on all the number of days he had left. It was zero.
Yeah.
Trent is a junior, so hopefully we get back in, in the room, and, uh, we'll have him with us for another year. Anything else, this group, before we adjourn? All right. Next town council meeting, Tuesday, June ninth. Then, you know, probably more to come on developments with, with everything. So stay safe, everybody. You know, hopefully we get back in the room. These, these are fun, but it's not the same as sitting, sitting.
Much better tonight than the last one.
Okay. Great job, CMC. Thank you for your help. I think everything went, 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 went really well tonight. So. Um, all right. Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
All the favors say aye.
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 All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.